Thank you. Moving on to item 7.4, CS-2025-082, Chief Administrative Officer/Deputy Clerk Re-Library Review Final Report from the Library Review Ad-Hoc Committee. I have a motion moved by Mayor Walker, seconded by Councillor Raymond that reads that item CS-2025-082 dated November 12, 2025, regarding the Library Review Final Report from the Library Review Ad-Hoc Committee be received and that staff be directed on how to proceed with both the future of the TAY libraries as well as where non-literacy-based program is best offered. Andrea, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Chair Bumstead. If everyone is okay, we do have a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation that we could share now just to provide an overview of the report. Okay, I will share my screen. So, good morning, Mayor and members of council. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with a high-level summary of the information contained in CS-2025-82, which is included on this agenda. We ask that all questions be held until the end, if possible. I know, I should be able to, but it's not working. There we go. I'm having some technical difficulties. Don't mind me, I'm going to scoot back there. Okay, here we go. The background. Following months of discussion and review, the Library Board recommended to council during their April 24, 2024 council meeting that all three existing library branches be closed and that a new library be built in Port MacNichol. This report that came forward to council on the 24th is of the foundation of this report that you're seeing today. Following the report, council created the Library Review Ad-Hoc Committee, or LRAC for short. The committee was comprised of Deputy Mayor Norris, Councillor Bumstead, and Councillor Larmont. The committee was tasked with the following: to review and analyzing the building condition reports related to the three existing branch locations while considering future budget impact and potential future needs; to review and analyze the statistical data related to visits, circulation, programs, and library structure comparison while considering potential future needs; review and analyze the current non-literacy-based programming provided by the library while considering potential future needs, in addition to where the related programming is best provided, whether it's the library or through recreation; review and analyze the current community spaces available within Victoria Harbour, Wabashine, and Port MacNichol, which are our current branch locations, along with required future needs; engage township residents to receive input on the services and/or programming they utilize at their library; frequency of visits, main library branch, and other related questions as determined by the committee; and then to provide a report with a recommendation to council regarding the future of the current three-branch library system. The committee met seven times with their initial meeting being held on September 17, 2024, and this PowerPoint provides a summary of their findings and related recommendation. The library is governed by numerous pieces of legislation and guidelines. These include the Public Libraries Act, the Ontario Public Library Guidelines, Accessibility for Interrans with Disabilities Act, Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation, and the Ontario Building Code. Further details related to each of these can be found on pages four through six of your report. Buildings assessments were completed on the three branches, and the assessments focused on overall building condition, AODA requirements, and related costs for building improvements over the next 20 years. Further details related to those reports are included on pages seven through 10, with the full assessments attached as schedules two through four to this report. In summary, this slide provides an overview of the priorities for the Wabashine Library, broken down by short, medium, and long term. The total estimated works to be done over a 20-year period for this branch would cost approximately $296,000 with a 10% contingency. The Victoria Harbour Library, again, broken down by short, medium, and long term, the total estimated works to be done over a 20-year period for this branch would cost approximately $559,000, again, with that contingency. And the Port MacNichol Library, the estimated works to be done there over a 20-year period would cost approximately $517,550 with a contingency of 10%. This slide shows the total estimated cost for building repairs at the three branches up until 2043, which is about $1.3 million. Statistics. So, looking at visit circulation, programming, and structure, there are 2,006 active cardholders as of 2024. When we consider our 2021 census population number of 11,091, that means that 18% of our current population are active cardholders. The following statistics that you will see have been gathered from 2009 to 2023, keeping in mind that years 2020 and 2021 were impacted due to COVID. Overall, library visits have decreased by 33%. Computer usage also decreased by 58%. The physical circulation items decreased by 52%. E-audio, ebook, and e-periodicals increased by 94% during that time period. It's important to note that patrons aren't required to physically attend the branch to access those e-materials, but they are required to have an active library card. Additional information regarding these statistics can be found on pages 14 to 32 of the report. Library usage stats. So, from 2019 to 2024, this is a summary for the three branches combined. For reference purposes, we excluded the years of 2020 and 2021. Time of day with the highest usage is 1:30 to 2:30 p.m., and the lowest time of day usage is 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The average number of patrons per day is 18, the month with the highest usage being August, and the month with the lowest being December. The total number of visits over that four years was just over 26,000. If you're breaking that down by year, it's about 6,500 per year or 543 per month, and that is inclusive of all three branches. So, this shows a summary of the usage per branch. So, between 2019 to 2024, the branch with the highest use was Victoria Harbour, followed by Port MacNichol and Wabashine. To break that down further, these next few slides compare library visits and the circulation at each of the branches. So, to clarify, library visits reflect any time that a patron enters the branch, while circulation statistics represent the number of physical items borrowed from the library. A library visit could be dropping off a book, attending a program, or just browsing the collection. The red and gray bars in the next three slides are 2020-21, so of course, they were impacted with restrictions through COVID. The circulation numbers for the Port MacNichol branch have shown a steady increase, although they are still lower than pre-COVID numbers of 2019. The library visits as well have seen a steady increase, but again, not back to those 2019 numbers. In Wabashine, the 2024 circulation numbers have surpassed those of the 2019. The library visits have also seen a stunning increase, although they are still not up to those post-COVID numbers. In Victoria Harbour, both the 2024 branch circulation numbers as well as the library visits are higher than 2019. Next, the committee looked at the library structure comparison within Simcoe County. TAY Township is both geographically the smallest municipality and the municipality with the lowest population with the three-branch library structure. In Simcoe County, the only other municipalities that have a three-library branch structure are the townships of Clearview and Springwater. For reference, Springwater is significantly larger in population, having an additional 10,600 residents, and in size, larger by about 397 square kilometers. The township of Clearview has a slightly higher population at 3,700 more residents, but their size is significantly larger at just over 418 square kilometers. As there were only two, three library branch systems to compare to within Simcoe County, staff looked further at the 2023 provincial reporting, and they pulled some data for seven multi-branch libraries to provide some additional comparison. Of those, TAY Township is the third lowest for resident population served. The number of active cardholders is the second lowest when looking at three-branch library systems. West Gray Township was the only other municipality with a lower number. And in 2023, their number was 1,487 for active cardholders. TAY is tied with Clearview Township for the third lowest percentage of population served at 18%. This breakdown includes the annual municipal grant, which was $419.55 in 2025. In addition to that grant, staff added the other financial contributions to the library, such as rent, salaries of non-library staff, to come up with that municipal contribution total that you see in this slide. The rent charged to the libraries was consistent for many years and did not reflect market rates. This rent was increased in 2025 by just over 21,000 to better reflect both economic and inflationary pressures, although it is still not considered to be market rent. For reference, in 2025, just over 101,000 in municipal expenditures was equal to a 1% tax increase. So, this slide shows you the cost per visit. So, in 2024, it was $19.54, and then it further breaks it down by cost per active cardholder, which is $244.21 based on the 2024 totals. And as a reminder, 18% of our population are current active cardholders. The library reserves. So, this kind of provides a bit of an overview of the current reserves. There are 10, and as noted on the side, many of these reserves are set for a specific purpose. Looking at non-literacy programming and optimal delivery. So, literacy-based programming is generally training or guidance in using library materials and services, development and practice of reading, writing, and numeracy skills, and some examples are shown here in the slide. Non-literacy-based programming provides an opportunity for social connection, and as you'll see, there may be some correlation to having a bit of a literacy-based component as well. And again, there's some examples there. Non-literacy-based programming has been very popular with patrons at the library, and the programming does bring people into the library. While there, they may decide to sign up for another program, take out a book, et cetera. Library programming is mostly led by staff with some volunteers. Programming is limited at both the Wabashine and Victoria Harbour branches due to space. The Victoria Harbour branch can book the Harbour Shore room for larger groups, groups larger than 10, but availability is limited as it is used and rented for other library, sorry, non-library purposes. Operational services programming. So, this is our existing programming has really been focused on active living programs that are run by paid volunteers or community volunteers, paid instructors, sorry, or community volunteers. They primarily utilize the space at both Oakwood and Port MacNichol community centers, and there are some reciprocal agreements in place with the school board for our soccer programs. There's further information related to programming within the report, along with staff complement and branch hours. Those are pages 10 to 14. So, here is an overview of the programming that is currently provided. As mentioned, those library programming numbers continue to rise, especially with the addition of virtual offerings. Although we have seen a decrease in the number of programs being offered, the attendance has increased significantly, as mentioned, set by 75%. Based on statistics gathered, there is definitely an interest from the community to provide both literacy and non-literacy-based programming within the township. Community space analysis. So, looking at our current space, the Port MacNichol branch, some of the groups that regularly use this space include the Pathfinders, Girl Guides, Embers, Tudors, Portorama, and the Port MacNichol Recreation Group. In addition, there is a space that can be rented for family events, such as baby showers and birthday parties. In Victoria Harbour, there is that small reading room that can accommodate up to 10 people, and it's currently used by such groups as Sit and Stitch and weekly tutoring sessions. The Harbour Shore room is available, although, as mentioned, it is not formally part of the library, but it can be booked through the township with applicable fees being waived. And the Wabashine branch does not have additional space for community groups to utilize, and the programming space is limited. The Library Review Committee was part of the mandate of that committee was to do a survey, and that survey was open from May 14, 2025 to July 4, 2025. There was a total of 759 responses received, and of those, 661 surveys were completed, and 98 received partial responses. Based on the 759 responses, that means that just over 6% of the township residents completed the survey. And if you look at our active cardholder number of 2,006, 30% of those active cardholders completed the survey. From that survey, it showed that Victoria Harbour branch was the most frequented, followed by Wabashine, and then Port MacNichol. Certainly, there was a lot further information that was determined through that survey, and the full survey results are attached as Schedule 11 to the staff report. So, the options that were looked at by the committee. Option one was status quo, to maintain three branches with some renovations and to conduct renovations based on need. Keeping in mind, any renovations conducted would impact the library grant, reserve balances, and overall library budget. Hours of operation and programming would remain as-is with current staffing levels. As referenced in one of the reports, should the three libraries be retained, additional staffing may be required. Looking at that, it would be an increase of approximately $96,000. That would provide two additional staff, each working 22 hours per week. The committee asked that we reflect some of the comments that were made during the discussion to provide this committee with a better understanding of the thoughts that were in their mind at the time. So, some of those comments that were made during discussion of option one. A financial burden for upgrades starts in 2028. Based on the statistics, that wouldn't warrant a three-branch system. Survey results show that people are happy with what they have. All buildings require maintenance, and at some point, we should go to a one-branch system, but not right now. And over the next 20 years, the works identified in the BCAs don't seem radical. Option two. A one-branch system, so renovating and operating out of one branch. By reducing to one branch, renovations and/or expansion can be focused on the one library. The hours of operation and programming can be expanded, and the remaining two-branch buildings could be sold or repurposed. Under this option, the board and council could review the usage and trends based on a one-branch model while maximizing library services and decreasing overall operating expenses. During discussion at the committee, it was noted that Victoria Harbour would be the preferred option because of its central location being close to commercial businesses and the ability to expand into the rental space on either side in that building. Option three. A one-branch system, building a new branch in Port MacNichol. Port MacNichol was the location that was proposed, as you'll recall, by the Library Board. The three existing branches could then be sold or repurposed. If sold, the proceeds could be used to help offset some of those construction costs. The hours of operation and programming could be expanded. During discussion related to this, some of the comments made were that it doesn't make sense financially. The number of active cardholders doesn't support this option. It's an unnecessary burden on the township based on our numbers. Don't feel Port MacNichol is central to the township, and there is no links transportation. Overall, library use is declining. Option four was to close all of the libraries. Negotiate non-resident agreements with neighboring municipalities. Tiny Township is an example of a municipality that doesn't have a library, but they do allow their residents the option to use the libraries in Midlands, Penitentquishing, or Springwater, and they pay those municipalities for that service. Based on existing costs for other municipalities, the estimated cost for the township, based on 2,006 active cardholders, would be around $237,000. Should that option be considered, staff would work with the municipalities and their library boards to obtain better numbers for our reference. During discussion, comments made included not agreeing with this option based on the survey results. People want their libraries in their communities. People would be without a center to gather and learn. People are satisfied with the services available at the library, and they love our staff. Statistical and political guidelines don't support closing all branches. Existing reciprocal agreements with other municipalities are a benefit to keep the library open. May consider, in the future, if active cardholder numbers dropped below and 1,500 was a number that was mentioned at that time. Who should be providing non-literacy-based programming? So, non-literacy-based programming, as mentioned, is enjoyed by the patrons, and it also brings patrons into the library. The program provides an opportunity for social connection and continued learning. Operational services program is considered active living programming, run by program facilitators currently. Staff have not received requests to expand the active living programming to include non-literacy-based programming at this point. Programming is one of those areas where the library has seen an increase, as mentioned earlier. So, now we get to our recommendation. So, following the meetings and related discussion, the LRAC is recommending the following option to council for consideration. The LRC recommends option one being status quo, maintaining three branches with some renovations for the next four years, and that within the five years, the TAY Township Public Library reduce operations to one branch, and that the Victoria Harbour Library branch becomes a preferred location with necessary renovations, and that the Wabashine Library branch converts to a community center, and that the Port MacNichol Library branch be sold or leased as a commercial venue, and that non-literacy-based programming is best offered through the TAY Township Public Library. The LRAC has now completed its mandate, and provided that council does not require anything further from the committee, it is dissolved in accordance with the procedure by law. In closing, I would like to thank the team who provided the content for the various reports, being Heather, Katie, Emmy, Sean Barrio, and Brian Anderson, and to Denise for her help in preparing today's PowerPoint presentation. And at this point, I would like to call on Deputy Mayor Norris, who is the Chair of the LRAC, to speak. And I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Andrea. And yeah, the PowerPoint, it's a little long, just as the report is extremely long, with 13 additional schedules there. I think we're into the thousands of pages of work. Just to echo Andrea's appreciation to all the staff that have turned around and helped out the committee. We definitely appreciate that, along with Heather DeLong, her Head Librarian. A number of questions were posed to her, and many thanks to Janet McFadden and Heather Walker for attending all these as another resource. I'm not going to go on. I think the report speaks for itself. Just to dismiss some speculation, you know, from the Library Board. This is a reason for bringing this to council's attention is from the, it stems from the master plan back in 2016, where a review should be within the 10-year period. So, it's not a case that the Library Board wants to turn around and get rid of our libraries or us as council. So, I just wanted to, you know, make reference to that. The other is the public participation we had. Many thanks to all those that turned around and filled out the survey. As it came back, everyone wants our library. They're quite satisfied with the current library system, and we don't know what's going to happen in the future, whether grants, there will be a swing in the library use. So, other than that, many thanks. Hopefully, council can divulge all this information. I know it was quite extensive even for us. My appreciation to Councillor Larmont, Councillor Bumstead for being part of the subcommittees. So, other than that, I'll turn it back to Councillor Bumstead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Norris, and I echo the thanks to all the staff and everyone who participated in this ad hoc committee. It was quite a task, and it took a little while, but we did manage to get through it all with, like I say, all the help from staff. So, I will now open the floor for questions or comments from council. Councillor Talbot, go ahead, please.
Thank you, through the chair. I just wrote a little something down, so if you could bear with me, I would appreciate that. So, I'll start. When elected a number of years ago, I pledged under the Municipal Act, my primary is to govern the municipality and represent the public by considering the well-being and interests of the entire community. This includes setting policies determining services integral physical responsibility, physical integrity, accountability, and transparency in the municipality's operation. Today, I am going to focus on financial management, ensuring the accountability and transparency of the municipality's financial integrity. Oh, I wrote it twice, sorry. As we have moved forward with the Library Board in the direction they view as a suitable path, the Ad-Hoc Committee is recommending that the libraries remain status quo for the next four years. As the Library Board has reported, an overall decline in the physical circulation overall of our libraries, the ad hoc prefers to leave aspects of the library in decline for the next four years with no movement to initiate change. Prices are going up, increased heating, increased insurance, increased building maintenance, increased cleaners, increased book prices, increase in other materials, and definitely increase in staffing cost. If any one of us on council or in the private sector had three businesses suffering, would we continue to feed our losses over the next four years? We consolidate, or we would outsource. I know, I would not. For me in this position, managing finances is the key to continued sustainability and future growth in these questionable economic times. There are a number of TAY residents that do not utilize our existing library and do not have an active library card. Based, as Andrea had said earlier on the 221 census data, only 18% of TAY residents are a member of the library. I ask myself of this recommendation, had it come before council at the beginning of our term, would it have had a different outcome? I know a fellow who once told me, if you close, cut the libraries, it's political suicide. My position now, or here, is to decide an outcome that is beneficial to all the residents of our township, not a select few. We, as a municipality, do not have deep pockets, and the need for three libraries is no longer warranted due to increased costs and decrease in physical materials, but we do have an increase in digital services. All schools have modern, up-to-date libraries with extensive holdings, which provide excellent sources they need. Seeking any info is readily available, accessible. To have one library would be an asset with substantial saving to the municipality, and that is my position to attain for the whole community. The library board, they've worked hard on this. I've been on the library board, I can't even remember, it's been so long. And they take great pride in seeing, you know, the trends that are happening and, you know, the source of the data information that's collected. It's not just something that occurred, it's been a longstanding process. And I commend each and every one of the staff that I've worked, or staff, each and every one of the committee members that stand on that board. So, I did have one question, just for the ad hoc committee. Did the ad hoc committee review alternatives, such as negotiating non-resident agreements with neighboring communities? And I'm not sure, I didn't, I don't know if I've seen that. So, on close, yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough decision to make, but I think it is warranted, and it is, and at this time, it's needed to make change. And change is difficult. We had change when the schools, amalgamated the schools. It all makes sense to do that change for the betterment of the whole community or the entire township, not the select few. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Talbot. Andrea, could you maybe answer Councilor Talbot's final question?
Thank you, Kevanstead. So, the question, I believe, was whether we had looked at and agreements with other communities. So, Councilor Talbot, just a question. In the slide, it talked about the potential cost if we were to close all three branches and look to other municipalities to provide that service for us? Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, no, I did see that. I just, in your report, I just wondered if the ad hoc committee looked at that in, with, throughout their discussions in their seven meetings. That's all. I'm not sure if that was, was looked at as an alternative. Yes?
I, I, oh, sorry.
I believe it was, Councilor Talbot, yes. All right, thank you. Thank you. Further, Councilor Lash Bell, please.
Yeah, through the chair. My first comment before I start my little presentation that I have. I appreciate the presentation today that was provided through Andrea's staff. I find it odd, a little late, because most of my questions and concerns will be addressed from my report. So, what I seen today may be duplications. It would have been nice to seen this prior to today. I could have reduced a lot of my questions, so I find it difficult now, but I'm going to proceed with what I have prepared, and I spent considerable time at this also. So, if the chair allows me, I will proceed with what I have as information and questions. And it may, may seem slightly like some duplication, but so be it.
Go ahead, counselor.
So, let me start off by asking, did the committee rely solely on the survey findings? My question was just a no. And seeing the presentation today, I can say it was part survey and data provided by the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we, on the utilization of the survey, do you find that 680 respondents are reasonable to support your recommendation moving forward? And I ask that of you, Councilor Bumstead.
I believe it is, and I think we discussed that at great lengths that are ad hoc meetings.
So, I guess my next question, and I think the idea of if the response is no, and I've asked, can you provide additional data to support your recommendation? And the presentation today kind of asked that. But I would like to take, I'd like to review the concept of the yes vote and what it presented today. And ask if the committee utilized the survey as a supporting document to determine their recommendation for it today, and in the answer, yes, I can answer myself. But I'll ask the chair to allow me to voice my concerns in regards to survey, if indeed it played a key role in decision-making. So, it is my understanding that 680 responded to survey, or six percent of the population. We all agree, this is the actual numbers of submission, and that is correct from what I heard today. My question to the committee, do you believe surveys can be deceptive? For example, how many were non-residents? Is there a number? I asked you, the chair, is there a number of non-residents?
I believe that was in the survey, if you, it was an attachment, all the survey results.
And what is that number?
I don't know off the top of my head what the number is, counselor. Deputy Mayor Norris, can you answer that?
Yeah, I think that's why we provided all the reports. The survey is there, you can gather all that information. If you do, go and read that part of the report. I don't believe it's up to us to have this off the back of our.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I read the report quite detail. I'm asking you as a committee what the number is. I want to make sure the committee understands what they are providing today. So, yes, I'm asking that question, and it's my due diligence and my right to ask that question. So, what is the number?
Yeah, other minutes of the meeting, it was quite confirmed that we were well, most well aware. If you're looking for a, for a personal comment, as if I have it in my brain right now, no. Read the report.
Well, I've read the report, Counselor, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to ask, did you read the report? You should know the number, the number is 500. But it's important, because 500 non-residents, when we talk about the 2,000, that brings it down to 1500, that's just some information, so I'm going to move on. My question to the committee, do you believe surveys can be deceptive? For example, how many, how many multiple times would an individual present a resume? Like, for instance, was, as an individual, I could have made ten submissions. So, do we concur this will have an impact on the number of actual individuals responded? We don't know of the 680. One guy could have submitted 100 of them. That's fact. So, I, I just want to talk about surveys and the importance they play in this, so I'll carry on. My question, is there, are, is there are 206 active cardholders, and only thirty percent of the six, of which the 680 surveyors responded? Assume they hold an active card. It's a committee where an active library card only has to be used once every two years. My question, do we believe this should have an impact when analyzing commitment to the library? Is, is the ad hoc committee that recognize that I can only have to tend once in two years, and it's an active card? Just, that's just information. Because I think that's important when we talk about the numbers of respondents and active cards in the use. And I will continue on. My question to the committee, do you believe in trends in the impact they would play in decision-making? And so, do we believe it's important to recognize the number of respondents under the age of 44 was thirty percent of the total submission? And sixty-six percent were over the age of 45? Leading to the next question. Well, what would the service needs and interest be in library service for the next generation? What do we see happening? Is it more electronics, or are we going to see changes? Like, I'd be curious what the ad hoc sees moving forward. If the young, if young people are less, and the older people are going, and that's a trend, I think that's important for me to understand. So, obviously, this is information, you can respond back later. As you've written your report, the actual statistics document it said 2009 trends, and it was in the report, that's why I talk about duplication. It does say active cardholders have decreased by 33%. Library visits have decreased by 33%. Computer use has decreased by 58%, and circulation physi- has decreased by 52%. My question to the committee, please provide for me the number of cardholders presently utilizing JCP's library. This is important for me for decision-making. Because it said, if we have X amount of number, I don't know what it's, I think it's 500, because I read my report. So, they're already using outside, they have access to a library. So, they're not being denied if we go from three to one. So, they still have resources to go to, and that's 500 of them. So, to conclude this portion, I would ask, why the ad hoc committee report recommends a delay almost five years for the transition to one-branch system? After the studies found by the library board clearly indicates a reduction of circulation by library visit. I may add and ask, the ad hoc committee, who is better to determine the fate of our library? Should we not take the AI vice or the frontline staff that has been for years tracking library use and need? I asked the committee, what is the difference from a library staff and other staff reports that comes before this council? Council relies on staff reports to provide accuracy and best information on all issues at day. Why is the library recommendation different from others? That's info, it's just my observation? And this has been in the system for 40 years. I'm just curious, because the board has a different opinion of moving forward than what the ad hoc committee is recommending. Don't need an answer, but food for thought. And also, if I may ask the chair, I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about in question regarding finances or budget impacts on the future library needs. My question, did the committee consider how the library will immediately finance deferred capital projects and continue to maintain the planned short-term projects of 450 for three branches over the next four years? Is, is there a plan for this? Can anybody answer what the intent? I guess nobody answered, move on to the next question then. Mike? Okay, go ahead, Barry.
Well, again, what we're looking at is the best. When you look at the financial implications, basing it on the four to five years, some of the recommendations within the facilities report could be put off, making it zero. It's up to the library board. This committee only made recommendations. That's why we provided all the reports. You have your opinion. The committee turned around and based their opinion on what was presented. So, that's all I got.
Oh, I appreciate your opinion, that we all have opinions, that's why I'm asking questions. And I think it's important that my opinions can be heard. So, and when I ask certain questions, I'm assuming, you know, the budget of the financial part has to be considered moving forward. So, on the plate right now, for example, Port McNichol, there's a huge cost that has to be, which is going to be taken in reserves. So, my point is, on this one, Deputy Mayor, is I hate to see you spend money in four years, and I understand what you're saying, that all of a sudden, you know, we could go to one branch, so we don't want, I don't want to waste money. So, we can move on, I think we kind of share that thought. So, I guess, and I think you might answer my next question. To the committee, if the intent within five years to reduce libraries down to one, will they recommend spending of capital projects regardless of the recommendation in the report in the immediate term? So, I guess you're saying it's going to be up to the library board to make this presentation to council of what has to be happened as far as the capital spenders. For instance, the doors of Port McNichol. So, I gather that, so I can answer that question. My question to the committee, is there assurance that future councils would support the reduction or transition to one library? Will the ad hoc committee take into consideration additional percent increase to reserves in order to plan for mid and long-term? The 797, 500 financial susceptible to future repairs? Be mindful that 96,300 misopended is equivalent to 1% increase for a budget year. And why I ask this question, it's important, if the next council decides that they're going to maintain all these things and not honor the request of, of the four years, because I, there's no reinsurance what the next council is going to do. So, this is that what-if scenario? So, is there intent to create a reserve in the event this future councils may not agree to what you say and want to continue all three? Because $800,000 is a lot of money. So, I think that has to be addressed. Where do we go with that money in the event of? I don't, I don't like the unknown, the unknowns, the uncertainty. So, obviously, the committee has to consider that part of it, so I'll move on. So, my question to the committee is, are you aware of any update capital costs associated with any facility that includes any current renovation costs or AD costs requirement associated with a major project within the last year? And that makes, maybe reference to Port McNichol or anything else. Like, we're going back in numbers, it was a few years ago. Have we investigated if they're true numbers or not? And we can't until we actually go to a tender process, I understand that. But that consideration has to be given to that concept about money, because that's important to me moving forward, and I'll speak to that part of it later on. So, my item two, which I find really intriguing, suggesting Victoria Harbor Bank becomes a preferred location with the necessary renovation is definitely not a choice. I believe the residents would adhere to, and here we are, talking about reduction of three libraries to one with input from six percent of the population. And you want to remove two rentals, one being the post office, that between the two generates approximately $50,000 revenue, plus what the harbor generates. If you are talking long-term and ask me support your report, can the committee tell me how the intent to make up lost revenue? Provide to me where they house the new post office? Residents are, are at times creatures of habit. You have one small area where we house a bookstore, liquor, post office. How much flack do you think you would anticipate in removal of the ideal setup for, especially for seniors? And removing post office out of downtown? I can't think of another place in Victoria Harbor, but, well, maybe we'll put it back in the backfield somewhere, but it's ideal where you are. And I really take offense to consider Victoria Harbor as the library's main focus, considering the impact it would have on more than six percent of our population, and agree that the residents would not adhere to that move. My question of the committee, what is long-term updated capital cost to bring the existing facility up to current AODA standards? With addition of the current post office space and a second rental unit to support their recommendation for Victoria Harbor? P is the suggested location from there, not currently included on the master plan. Can Amy tell me what this upgrades would be? If you're going to make a recommendation that we have to support, I think I have to have numbers and money to support what you're suggesting. Victoria Harbor is an old, old building, and you're going to start bringing things up to stuff. I don't see a number what that's going to be currently, because you're talking in five years possibly do that. We won't have a reserve, because that's going to be spent on, on the Port McNichol. We're going to need money, nobody's talked about increasing the, our tax rate 1% to generate money to allow this to happen. I don't see that anywhere in your report. So, then I'm going to move on to the next one. Just. If we are to support their recommendation, there are many issues that need to be addressed. For example, if we move forward with four-year capital, how does the committee suggest funding be in place to support their recommendation? For example, when do we create funding allegation for upgrades Victoria without some formal game plan? This, I believe, is a requirement. I, for one, would never ask support of what is a recommendation without supporting documentation that covers all the needs, such as capital requirements showing work needs to finance to support the project, as well supported by majority of his resident? That's my thoughts. Item three, I support. There's a potential to sell the facility and investigate in addition to the safety fire hall and joint venture for use by the department and local groups. We heard today a presentation from the, from the study that Chief Amer done, and talking about the needs. Here we are, talking about Port McNichol, I mean, sorry, Wabashin. And down the road, Deputy Mayor, you and I self have looked at this expansion of doing this. We're going to have some choices to make and priorities to make, but that's a consideration we've always talked about, never ever proceeded pursuit on it. So, when we talk about space revisions, you know, there's two groups that can be, you know, satisfied for moving forward expenses. So, I just thought I'd say that. I wouldn't support doing the old building, but that part. Item four. There is a question I'm sceptical about utilization as a commercial property is suspect. Is there a need for more commercial Port McNichol? Presently, there are vacant properties that now are requesting its only change to convert to residential rental units, because there is no market for facilities for sole purpose of commercial. My concern, if we are to continue to meet AODA. My concern, if we are to continue to meet AODA assess in this facility, there's a huge cost associated. Would it hurt the sale of the property from residential use? This idea needs to be visited by qualified individuals who knows what the market is, what would sell. So moving on, I just come down my last few pages. Points of interest. And this was in part of your report. Did committee consider what cost per person page time visit has increased substantially and is based on municipal contributions in the competition allocations such as rent, salaries and non library staff, for example? And you get, and Andrew dispelled that currently in twenty twenty five is twenty five dollars per visit. Talking about trends, I wonder if the committee recognized that library board has substantial studies that relate to e periodics, e loans, e audio, ebooks, e newspaper have substantially increased by ninety four percent. Does this not send a red flag where the future, the future is going and use of libraries going? Talking about trends. Again, did you as a board consider that service once a mainstay of libraries? Use that the library has statistics studies that photocopy, fax, email services, internet job, information research is declining with changes in advance on home based technology products, devices such as cell phone tablets, you know, with wireless access available in many recognition commercial facilities. That's a given. That's the way technology is going, like most of the home based stuff. So as info, our data is based on fifteen years of library use. Reference in the report page forty nine uses twenty nineteen COVID years as the benchmark. Is the community aware use was almost non existent? Therefore, any increase in use invitation after present indeed should reflect our numbers. I am curious, did they, the head of committee during deliberation discuss why the increases are occurring? Did they, the committee do a breakdown of what is program related visit and what a library related visit? As example, prior years, recreation and social programs related visit were not counted. Today, they incorporate into library visit use. I wondered, do we assume impact or statistic can be treated as skewed data which can be stored statistical models? As info, Victoria Harbor indeed is a home base for these programs that offer primarily by voluntary. Therefore, if one of the main reason for increase is visit change, be mindful that township has other facilities that can host this program performed by volunteers. This is what I'm getting at is that the trend, if you talk about visitation use and all this stuff, mo- most of it is program oriented. It's not library oriented anymore. And so when you talk about the facility and use of this and that, this is something that council for the last few years should have considered. What are we? Are we a library based operation or now we have to become multipurpose, including all these programs and putting them in the jurisdiction of the library that could be done by Parks and Recreation, whatever. As info, I entered the library for the purpose of photocopy is considered a visit at a cost of twenty five dollars. Approximately, I may not even be an active cardholder. This is all about stats. So to conclude, for me, I understand the difficulty in the process of going from three libraries presently operating down to one. Trends regarding library use show continuing downward trend each year. It does not bode well from a perspective of trying to be efficient as the board struggles constantly juggling to stay below the recommended yearly percentage limit of budget, financial needs and the ability of the township to continue to maintain three branches. Mother time and technology continues to evolve and does not favor the board to rely solely on themes of library without incorporating programs to justify and maintain each brand. The township is not alone in declining use within the library. This is common throughout the county. The township must decide now in the best interest of all taxpayer, what is the best from a financial plan moving forward? Is it in the best interest to invest in declining business? Or should we take the position of creating one standing alone branch now and create a stable and more efficient operation program given present day trends? My fears, if we continue on this path of having three branches with declining use in the end of five years, we may not have any. My position is is to create a one strong library. And my last point kind of reflects today. I would like to make, we are in tough times. Families are struggling to meet food needs, pay bills in a world where prices keep escalating. Isn't that interesting? Once again, today, we've represented with a request for funding for support eleven families in need in Tate. Previous presentations were seventy five families in need. We knew other groups within Tate provides some of the service. I would guess the number of individuals struggling to meet their everyday needs within Tate far exceeds the six percent respondents and the numbers continues to rise. I'm curious if we have a financial or fiscal response to reduce our budget, we're positive. Maybe it's time we consider reduction in order to be considered front runners in our budget delivery, addressing trends today and impact families in need. And this is ongoing. We see this every day where families are slowly struggling, but we keep increasing, we keep increasing. And we talk about all this other money we give out to municipalities. There comes a time this council has to recognize and stop the over expenditure and start looking within the municipality to provide the best care and best need for all of us. And that's one reason why I think the reduction down to one library really sends a message to people, and it's not hurting the system considering amount of people that there are five hundred outside of it. You really actually use, I really question. So I think to be proactive, I do support the reduction of three to one and make one strong stable library. Thank you. Sorry for all the time spent, but how do you get my frustration? No, thank you.
Thank you for your opinions and questions, Counselor Lashpall. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Counselor Raymond, please.
Thank you. Through the chair. This is a very difficult discussion we have to have, but it is an important one at the end of the day. I read through the report, looked through all the numbers and everything, and you have to understand the foregone conclusion that the library system, not just in Tate Township, but through all of Ontario and across North America, if you wish, they are evolving. Electronic documentation has just taken over. Ease of use from the home, ease of access from the home, that all comes into play. A good argument can be made regarding the expenses of trying to keep a three library system working. When we were elected in twenty eighteen, the first term, it was a discussion on how long could we keep this going? And even then, we knew, I think, most of us understood that that could not continue. Sooner or later, we'd have to make a discussion and we'd have to make some tough decisions. And putting off another four years is not fair to our residents when they look at the cost to carry all three libraries. Now, having said that, unfortunately, when I look at the library board's presentation and I look at the ad hoc committee's presentation, I do appreciate the effort that everyone has put into this. Because I don't think anybody is doing this from an acrimonious point of view. We all care. We all care about the residents. We care about the library system and the services that we are charged with providing our residents. I would have taken a completely different approach on all of this. And with some of the information I have, it would have saved some money in the Wabashine area. It has to do with pivoting and looking at the opportunity for dual purpose site. So a satellite library in Wabashine, for example. I've investigated some of the satellite libraries in other municipalities and they work. And it's used as a dual purpose. And as for who runs that office, whether it's a township operation with access to books provided by Victoria Harbor or it's a library operation, again, with books provided by Victoria Harbor on that are ordered online, is a feasible model in my mind. The you can remove all the books in Wabashine. And now you've got a rec, a community, community center that can be used. In twenty eighteen, we heard from residents in Wabashine that looked and spoke about the Wabashine library regarding the personal touch, the getting together well beyond just being a library. And not often did they talk about getting access to books. They talked about doing programming there, meeting people there, doing things. We can accommodate that. Turn it into a satellite library. So I, I'm just, I'm just, I appreciate the work that everybody put into these, these, I, uh, these reports. I just, I'm, I always try and think outside the box and look at some of the things that weren't talked about. So I have a study I've started on satellite branches. Wabashine have already spoken about how that could be accomplished. Port McNichol, to be honest with you, I mean, if we weren't losing Finley Street, that would have been a good location. Having, if we lose Finley Street, we can always go to the Port McNichol Community Center, the back part of the office, we can convert that into a satellite library operation. And eventually, we're going to have to deal with the community center anyway, as far as AODA. So you kill two birds with one stone. Anyway, all I'm saying is that I, I would, if I continue along this thought process, I have to do some more research and, you know, get some numbers to actively compete. But I just think that with all the options provided, five years is just too long to wait. We have to save money. We cannot continue to spend and just hope that the next next group of counselors are going to make the decision that I think that we are charged with. So from that perspective, I'll yield. Thanks for letting me do my opinion. Appreciate it. And let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Raymond. Any further comments or questions? Mayor Walker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I speak, perhaps it would be appropriate for Counselor Larmont to to speak as she was part of the, the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Larmont.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Bumstead. As all of you, I'm sure know, this was not an easy committee to be on. I do want to make it clear with a comment that Counselor Talbot made that you insinuated that our decision was, could have been based on politics with this being near end of term, and I find that very insulting. Politics had nothing to do with it. You know, there was, there was so much data that we went through and we made our decision based on that data. The library board was very strongly in the first meetings recommending, you know, they were pushing and pushing for a, for a new build in Port McNichol, which none of us think that, you know, that the numbers don't substantiate the the township spending millions of dollars on a new build when the numbers are going down for a library. That makes no sense at all. So basically, our, our decision, and we did say in our decision that that it was up to five years and we, and we, and we did say that, you know, if, if it was thought that it had to be done sooner, then do it sooner. And our, our recommendations were just recommendations. It's up to council to make the decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Larmont. Counselor Lashpall, please.
Through the chair, just want for clarification, and maybe I missed something along the boat, Counselor Larmont. I've always known his position was not a new bill. He was an option discussed. With my understanding of the meetings, it was one of, one of two options. Going down to one library, maybe in Portman Echo or, or investigate the process of maybe incorporating a new one. So maybe I'm wrong and missed the form of that part, but I think I was always under the impression that to go down from three to one. That was it. And yes, new build was talked, but never finalized by the, by the committee. So I might be wrong in that one. So just for information, and I will follow up on that one to make sure that I'm not incorrect. So.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Larmont.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Lashpall, I didn't say that they had made that decision. I said during our first few meetings, it was being pushed by the members from the library board. I'm not saying it was a library board decision, but it was strongly being pushed. Deputy Mayor Norris and Counselor Bumstead can, can account for that. It was strongly being pushed constantly that they wanted a new build.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Larmont. I apologize for the phone ringing there. Um, any further comments? Mayor Walker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, I wanted to, I want to thank everybody involved, staff, the ad hoc committee, the library board, council. This is, as, as Counselor Raymond referred to, a very difficult process. And I think the fact that we were able today, as has always been the case with council, that we were able to discuss it in a respectful manner and and get our points crossed is proof that we, we've got a good group to work with. Just a few points. I know we talked like Wabashine and at some one point there was a group there that was going to do fundraising. I haven't heard the status as to how much money they've raised or whether they've raised sufficient funds to, to consider some kind of a community build there. The, I think, listening to everyone, uh, we've got some more work to do. I think the the position of all of council is we need to reduce to one. I guess the question is the timing on that and how long it would take us to get there. And considerations that we have to make in light of other considerations such as the report we just had today on the future renovations to perhaps Port McNichol or Wabashine fire halls and whether that might be an option. Uh, there's also another location in Port McNichol that Counselor Talbot and I have kind of been keeping our eye on. I should know more in that regard in another six months or so, and I might be bringing something to council in, in that regard. There's a few things that the library statistics bother me. And I think we should be able to come up with a far more meaningful statistics report. So when a patron comes in the library, what are they there for? Are they there for books? Are they there for info? Are they there for computers? Are they there to get photocopies or for some other reason? And how they got there? And the reason that's important is regardless of which way we go with this as to where the new library or renovated library is going to be located, you're going to hear people say transit is an issue. I suspect there's very few people that actually walk to the library anymore. Also, if a group of five comes in, say a mom and, and four kids, is that recorded as five visits? So I think there's a lot of stats there that really need to be, I think, implemented by the board and staff be directed to, to follow them accordingly. And it would provide much more meaningful information than the, the information that we got before us. So for instance, I, well, through the reports, it said that an active library card is active for two years. That to me is an extremely long period of time. I think it should be something like at most six months. Uh, and why do you need an active library card? So for instance, if you use the Midland Library and are a Tate resident, you need a Tate library card to access the Midland library. So where is that in the stats as to how many of those we have? I think there was a number of about five hundred and some. So if there's that number, is that taken off the number of our active visitors? And we need a lot more thought on who should be providing non literacy, literacy training. Because it's going to impact the size of the building needed, staffing and everything else. To me, when we're looking at some of these, some of these uses for non literary chess club, games night, mahjong, they're not so and so, uh, party games night, craft night. Is that not something? Do we need library staff there for those purposes? Is that, whatever happened to volunteers? So do you wanna have chess club? You volunteer, you get somebody to look after it, you get a key, and you've got access to the building, you do your chess club thing. And that's it. And that's where the other confusion comes in, I think. Is people think because we're recommending going to one library. That all those non-literate, uh, literacy program is gonna stop. Well, it's not going to, it's still gonna continue. It may be in a different location, uh, within the municipality, within the village or whatever. But it's still gonna continue. And I think if it was just the fact of hard taking out of the books. One location would make a lot of sense. The other thing, madam clerk, maybe you can answer, I'm, I'm confused always. On the AODA standards. What exactly is the current? Legal requirement for those?
Thank you, worship through you, and, uh, I may call on our CBO as well because it is deeply, uh, integrated with the Ontario Building Code. Um, but it does speak to major renovations. Um, that's when our, our requirements, um. Kick in for the AODA standards. Um, and like I said, it's. It's to do with the Ontario Building Code, um, so. There's a, a whole host of, um. Of, of standards that we would need to meet should we, um, undertake, uh, a major renovation.
Okay, and, and that, that's really my question, so theoretically. If we don't undertake a major renovation to any of these facilities, they're fine as they currently are. Legally?
Your worship, legally, yes, I suppose, um, and, and again, our, our CBO may be able to better speak to that, um, however. Um, obviously. Uh, there are certain things that would be nice to have, um, just, you know, as holding our own standards, but, um.
Sure. Yeah, I just, it was just a question, I, 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 I get confused on it, because at one point. I, I, I understood that it was gonna come into effect, I believe it was twenty twenty-two, and all municipalities had to implement them. Um, but I guess, as you mentioned, that is more to do with the, uh. With the, uh, if you're doing an expansion or renovations, that you have to bring those things up to, uh, up to code. I think that's, uh, all my comments, uh, councillor Bumstead, thank you, and I think. Uh, we need to give a little bit of thought as to where we go from here with this, I think. Generally, it's, it's agreed to that we need to go to one library. But then we're gonna have to decide where that's going to be, when it's going to be. How we're going to deal with the non-literate, uh, literacy, uh, training, is that gonna be? Something that's assigned to the library, or is it something that we bring in-house? And we rely on volunteers to actually run those, those various programs, so, uh. Uh, thanks so much, and again, thanks to everybody, I know this has been a very difficult, uh. Very, and oh, the other thing I wanted is, has the library board? Commented on the. Ad hoc committee recommendation, Jeff?
Uh, not that, not that I'm aware of, go ahead, uh, Caitlin.
Thank you, uh, through you, chair, um. Procedurally, as the recommendation was in the ad hoc committee's hands, um, to then be brought back to council. Um, the board has not had a chance to formally respond, um, as the decision essentially is in council's hands at this point.
Thank you Caitlin.
Thank, uh, i- i- is that something that's going to be provided to the board as information, or? Are they just going to need to pick it up from today's meeting? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you through you, um, the ad hoc committee's recommendation has absolutely been shared with board members, um. Right after the ad hoc committee meeting, um. A- as will the results from this meeting be shared with them, um, but at this point, there's, uh, no. Further plans for the board to officially respond, um, however, obviously, if, uh, council wishes there to be, we can accommodate that.
Or the board could decide on their own that they wanna comment. Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, madam clerk, thank you, uh, uh, Chair Bumstead.
Thank you, um, uh, councillor Raymond, please.
Thank you through the chair, maybe a little bit premature. But it was a wholesome discussion, I wonder if we would want to just receive the report. And defer any further action, and just leave it at that point. Uh, as the, as worship has indicated, we have, we have to put some more thought into this, and maybe some other ideas will come out. But, uh, we need to keep the information that's in that report, because a lot of it is relative, so. I recommend that if we, if we're good to go, then we just receive the report and not act on any recommendations at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor. Um, I'm wondering if the clerk could maybe, um, put together a recommendation based on. The conversations we've just had. Go ahead Caitlin.
Through you, Chair Bumstead, um, should the wish of council be to receive and defer? Um, should the original mover seconder, um. Agree with that, um, then what we can do is a friendly amendment to essentially just receive and defer to. Um, and I'll take direction, um, if there's a specific timeline that we want to defer, defer to, or if there's any additional staff. Direction on this, um, I'd be happy to, uh, put that into a recommendation as well. And the original.
Thank you.
Seconder we had was, uh, mayor Walker and councillor Raymond.
Yes, so our, uh, mayor Walker, councillor Raymond, are you in agreement to doing this? Yes, yes, okay. Deputy Mayor Norris, please.
Thank you councillor Bumstead, and it's just a final comment here, again, the ad hoc committee was, uh. Put in place by council to turn around and draft up all kinds of different reports and everything else, the suggested recommendation we brought forward. As has been alluded to, this is not something that we can automatically tomorrow go to one library. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take more resources to turn around and figure this out. So, in, in closing, I think, uh. You know, the subcommittee has done their, their part, the information that's there, all the statistical and everything else is there. Um, to form that, uh. Final, uh, resolution, so. I'll leave it at that, and I, again, uh, I'm just appreciative of all the work that has been done. And, uh, we'll see where this out, uh, falls into place, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, councillor Talbot, please.
Thank you, through the chair, just, uh, I'd like to, um, go back to councillor Laramon and her dislike for my comment. It was a quote from somebody that said. That it's often if you cut or close a library, it's like anything. Um, sometimes you, it's political suicide, meaning that. Um, you know, then maybe people won't like you anymore, or that kind of stuff, it has nothing to do. Uh, with elections or whatever, it's just, that's people's. How they may see it, anyway.
Thank you councillor Talbot, councillor Larmo, please.
Thank you through the chair, um, councillor Talbot, I understand that that was, um, was a quote. But it was your comment that you have to wonder if this was the beginning of a term, if the decision would have been the same.
Thank you councillor Larmo, councillor Lashell.
Yeah, just to, to move forward through the chair, then, um. And I think, I think, for me, I agree, um, there was a lot of time and effort put into this, and I do appreciate it. There's some challenges here, and I think. Time spent sitting back after the deliberation today and the reports is well spent, and I do agree with councillor. Raymond that this should be received, deferred, and I think there are a lot of things they can investigate, and. I think for me, you know, if, if this thing was at two years, would have been strong consideration to get a reduction order. But for me, for me, like, suggesting Victoria Harbour, nah, not even, I would never support that, because it's gonna dis- disrupt a lot of things, but I think. Having, having this discussion. If the timeframe was reduction, or reduced, whatever. I think the point councillor Talbot was making, councillor Larmont was that. This term of council was done from the start, we would have gone through four years, and where we at, we'd be at the process of doing what we wanna achieve today. So, to me, given the new council, you got one more year of new council, to do that forward, you'd rather do it in the term of the council. Hoping that they have the same mind thought that we have today, so. I do like the idea of, of just receiving information, allow more time and input to decide what is the best option moving forward. Recognizing, one, location, down to one, we all agree, the costing. And better spot than Victoria Harbour did, to get the post off, because that'll be a killer for us, so, thank you. And I would support, uh, councillor's, uh.
Thank you councillor Lashell. So, where are we? Are we in agreement that we will defer? Caitlin, go ahead, please.
Thank you through you, um, if you like, I can, I can read the recommendation, um. As indicating that the. Uh, item be received and deferred to a future committee of the whole meeting, um. And then I can take direction if there's a specific timeline that, um, that council has in mind. Um, but if you're okay with that, I can read it.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Uh, that item CS twenty twenty-five zero eight-two dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five regarding the library review final report from the library review ad hoc committee be received. And that direction on the matter be deferred to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
And again, the original, uh, mover seconder, uh, was mayor Walker and councillor Raymond, so if they're both in agreement, then I, we can do a friendly amendment and move forward with the vote.
Okay, well, I will, uh, they are in agreement, so I'll now call the vote, all those in favor. Thank you everyone for a great discussion, um, now we're moving on to seven point five. CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-seven, manager of communications and technology services, re-monthly activity report. I have a motion moved by councillor Talbot, seconded by councillor Larmo, that reads that item CS dash twenty twenty-five. Eighty-seven dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five regarding monthly activity report, communications and technology services. October twenty, twenty-five be received. Uh, I don't see Elizabeth with us. No, any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote, all those in favor. Thank you, item seven point six, CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-three. Deputy Treasurer Re-Monthly Activity Report, I have a motion moved by councillor Raymond, seconded by deputy mayor Norris. That item CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-three dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Regarding the monthly activity report, financial services, October be received. Rebecca, do you have anything further to add?
Uh, Rebecca had to leave the meeting, but there's nothing further to add, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you Emmy, any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote, all those in favor. Thank you, item seven point seven. CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-zero, Legislative Coordinator Re-Monthly Activity Report, I have a motion moved by councillor Talbot. Seconded by councillor Larmo, that item CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-zero dated November twelfth. Twenty twenty-five regarding the monthly activity report, Legislative Services, October twenty twenty-five be received. Lacey, do you have any comments or on your report?
No, nothing further to add, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote, all those in favor. And that is carried. Seven point eight, CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-six, Chief Administrative Officer slash Deputy Clerk Re-Monthly Activity Report. I have a motion moved by mayor Walker, seconded by councillor Raymond. That item CS dash twenty twenty-five dash zero eight-six dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Regarding the monthly activity report, CAO slash Deputy Clerk, October twenty twenty-five be received. Does the CAO have anything further to add to her report?
Thank you councillor Bumstead, add nothing further at this point.
Thank you, comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I will now call the vote, all those in favor. And that is carried, and deputy mayor Norris, I will turn it back to you.
Thanks councillor Bumstead, well, uh, done to all the staff on their reporting. Um, we'll move on to item eight, other business, we have none. Uh, takes us to items for information, number nine, nine point one correspondence, uh. H Joel Romney, uh, road concerns on county road fifty-eight and Romney Road. Romney Road, uh, and I'll turn it to councillor Raymond.
Thank you through the chair, I just wanted to make sure that this came forward, um. Showing our new police board member, um, in our police board, uh, actively trying to get some changes. For our township to make it safer, so, um, just wanna thank, uh. Mr. Romney, as well as, uh, as our new police services board, um, and let's continue, let's hopefully get some more action happening, thank you.
Thank you councillor Raymond, any other comments to do with the correspondence from? I will mention, um, due to the number of accidents that have been out at the, uh, Vasey Road and, uh. And the county road, uh. I believe it was two or three weeks ago, um, the county has, uh. Put up new stop signs, uh, they're quite large, um. For somebody to blow through the stop sign out there, they shouldn't be on the road, so that's my comments there, um. And again, uh, speed across all, all roadways are impacting everybody, so. Hopefully, uh, the police service board can look at this, so. Other than that, not seeing any other comments. Uh, delegation follow-up, um. Direction, uh, I would suggest that that, uh, be forwarded to, uh, budget deliberations, uh. It'll be up to the mayor. In agreeance? Uh, the rest of councils in agreeance, okay. We'll give that direction. Uh, general discussion, committee staff question and answer period. Mayor Walker.
Thank you, uh, deputy mayor, uh, I just wanted to, uh, take this opportunity to, to make an apology. Uh, to councillor Raymond and councillor Bumstead. At the last council meeting, I was referencing the, um. Get-together, uh, that we had with the grade fives. And I shouldn't try to do things by memory, but, uh, I neglected to mention that both councillor Raymond. And councillor Bumstead, uh, were not only there, but also, uh, gave, uh, good, uh, guidance to the. Uh, to the students when they had the opportunity to speak. Uh, councillor Bumstead talked about council and always being a learning curve, and that, in other words, kids, uh. Once you get out of school, your learning doesn't stop. And councillor Raymond made reference to, uh, how council works and, uh, the fact that. Um, you know, we all have different opinions, but, uh, we listen to everybody and then in the end. Are able to come to a decision, so, uh, I apologize to you both, and in the future. I will not trust my memory, I'll write things down, thank you, uh. Thank you, uh, mister chair.
Problems, we are getting to that age, Ted. Um. Any other, uh, questions from council members? No, not seeing any, uh, we have no closed session, and there's no class, closed session reporting. So that leaves us to adjournment, uh. So resolution that this committee of the whole meeting adjourned at eleven forty-seven AM. Uh, have it moved by councillor Bumstead, seconded by councillor Lashell, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you everyone, uh, great meeting, we'll catch up with everybody soon.